Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and help us and guide us in making the best decisions for the children and the members of the community of St. Bernard Parish. These things we pray in your name.
Amen.
Along with the lead, send the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with everyty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith is not with us, Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. White.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Before we go to the regular agenda items, at this time, I'd like to, on behalf of the entire board, like to thank Ms. Cindy England, Ms. Lexi Pritchard, and Ms. Andrew Bertha for our wonderful little king cake party before the meeting and to recognize school board member recognition month. Thank you all so much for all you do above and beyond. We appreciate it. It was very nice. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to take a moment of privilege to recognize three people who we lost from our educational community. We're very sad that Dr. Scaffadel, who was a longtime coach and a teacher, or a teacher-coach and then an administrator with us for many, many years, and he passed, and our deepest condolences go out to the Scaffadel family. In addition, we'd like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Henry Dagro, who was a teacher and then a personnel director for the school system. Mr. Dagro was quite a gentleman and just a wonderful man, and I know many of us around this board were probably interviewed by Mr. Dagro for our first jobs before teaching.
He hired me.
He hired me, too.
Fifty-two years ago. One year ago, yeah.
He hired me almost fifty years ago, so... But anyway, and then, so our condolences go out to Mr. Dagro's family. And his wife was also a big part of our system. She was a teacher and also a principal. And then another person is Ms. Carol Maurisi. She was a bus driver with us for many, many years. After she was raising her children, she became a bus driver and was with us, and she was just an excellent role model to our students. She used to give little in services for the kindergarten students who had just started school, and she's, you know, just a great person, too. And so our deepest condolences go out to the Maurisi family also. So at this time, we will take a moment of silence for all of those that we've lost with us, Mr. Scaffadel, Mr. Dagro, and Ms. Maurisi. Okay, and again, our deepest condolences go out to the Scaffadel, Dagro, and Maurisi families. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda for communications update. And with us tonight, we have Lexi Pritchard with the SuperNews. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, everyone. In your communications packet for this month, you have all of our press releases that have gone out since we've last spoken. I did want to mention that we recently named our district-wide Students of the Year. You will learn about all of our school Students of the Year during next month's SuperNews, but I just wanted to mention our three district-wide winners, which is Rami Dali from Lacoste Elementary, Jackson Nunez from Tris Middle School, Anna Bonney Miller from Shamet High School. I'm excited to share their clips with you next month, so you can learn more about them. We've been doing really well when it comes to social media and website analytics. Our numbers are on page nine for you with our summaries over the last month. We've had over eighteen thousand total visits to our district website in the last month with over twenty-four thousand page views. In your packet, we've also included our teacher features that we've done over the last month, and we wanted to mention to you that our Read to the Final Four Fan Jam visits are underway and have been an incredible success over the last couple of weeks. We are so proud of our students, and we'd like to thank the Greater New Orleans Sports Foundation and the NCAA for promoting and inspiring reading growth through their Read to the Final Four program. We recently found out that the top sixty-eight schools in this program will be announced on Monday, and the students that go to those schools will receive a special surprise. We know that our students have been working really hard, and we're hopeful that all of our elementary schools will be included in that top sixty-eight. So I hope to have an exciting news with our Read to the Final Four numbers next time we speak. And with that said, I'd like to present our January SuperNews with special features from Smith Elementary and St. Bernard Middle School.
I always learned about a mission to Mars, history came alive at the battlefield, and Students of the Year were recognized for their great work in and out of the classroom. Those stories and more are all part of this month's edition of SuperNews.
Hi, I'm Lexi Pritchard.
And I'm Barry Lemoine. It's a new year, and it's time for a new SuperNews. We'll kick things off with some big news, our Students of the Year. Representing all that is good in our schools, each winner recently competed for district honors. A panel of community leaders conducted interviews and evaluated each portfolio to select our three winners. Congratulations to all of our school winners and to our three district Students of the Year, Rami Dali, Jackson Nunez, and Avani Miller. We'll meet them and all of our school-wide winners in next month's SuperNews feature.
And speaking of outstanding students and CHS, Avani was one of three Shamet High seniors recently named as Posse Scholars. She will attend Villanova this fall, while her classmates, Bo Nunez and Christine Chen, will enroll at Notre Dame. This is the eighth year in a row that CHS has had a Posse Scholar, and these prestigious four-year scholarships are each valued at over $250,000. Congrats to them, and thanks to CHS teacher David Bullard for helping create these amazing opportunities for our students.
Shamet High have prepared me for the Posse Scholarship by giving me multiple opportunities, which I could be involved in community service and gain leadership skills. And Mr. Bullard was actually my sophomore-year English teacher for AP English composition. He's prepared me by giving me a lot of, like, not just school and, like, tips on writing, but also a lot of life-changing advice.
And speaking of owl pride, a pair of former owls were recently back in the parish. Jordan Lord, a New York-based filmmaker, visited as part of the Art Strong series, while Tommy Hall, a cadet at West Point, was home for the holidays to share some big news. He was one of three cadets to receive the prestigious Marshall Scholarship for Continued Academic Study following graduation. Tommy and Jordan truly represent the best qualities of leadership and scholarship.
If you have an idea that you're really passionate about, and you're like, "I know that this should be a film that people should see," you know, don't necessarily wait until, you know, you've gotten the big grants, if it's possible. You know, that's the amazing thing about documentary, is that all you do really need is a camera and a microphone, you know, and then you just go.
And now, let's head over to W. Smith Elementary to meet its on-location news team there.
Hello, I am Kylie.
And I am Terriyan, and welcome to Smith Elementary for our SuperNews segment.
We'll start off with a pair of stars, as our superstars took part in all of the learning that is part of Starbase. This program stretches hands-on learning on all things related to STEM. Robots, rockets, math, and science were all part of the fun.
And even though our school color is purple, all of us here at Smith had to think pink earlier this year. It was all part of our effort to raise money to help fight cancer.
Hey, Terriyan, speaking of pink, what would we call America if everyone drove in a pink car?
I have no idea.
A pink car-nation. Car-nation, you get it?
In other news, our school also participated in another special dress-up day called Pyjama Jam Day. Our students and staff wore pajamas to school and received a visit from Sensu, who visit classrooms bearing grifts. You know, Kylie, sometimes when I can't find my pajamas at night, I wear my bathing suit.
A bathing suit? Why?
It makes it easier for me to dive into bed.
Never do that again. Well, that's about all the time we have for today, but before we go, let's take a quick look at two other events, our Day of Graduation and our Kiwanis Reading Awards.
Thanks to our community partners who make these events possible, and thanks to all of you for watching.
That's it for us here at Smith. B-Y-E. Bye!
Super job superstars. And speaking of stars, field trips have returned to the MAMA Center. Here, we see students engaged in some hands-on learning activities in preparation for their visit inside the planetarium.
Space was also at the heart of a very special NASA presentation when one of its flight directors visited our high school students, sharing some of the history, accomplishments, and vision for the space program. Through an array of video clips and spectacular images, students gained insight into NASA's Artemis missions, which includes a return to the moon in preparation for its ultimate goal, a human mission to Mars.
Hey, Lexi, did you hear about the restaurant on the moon that they're building?
No.
They say the food is good.
But there's not much atmosphere.
Yeah.
In inspirational news, the Governor's Office of Disability Affairs recently recognized the Barth family of St. Bernard Parish, presenting them with the Family of the Year Award. This is given annually in recognition of a family who exemplifies courage, strength, and unity for other families in our state. The Barth family was nominated by Sheramy Kirth, the Special Education Supervisor for St. Bernard Parish Public School System, who celebrated the Barth family on its innate ability to turn challenges into success.
And speaking of success, the Battle of New Orleans Commemoration truly brought learning to life as students from across the district visited, learning more about the people, the strategy, the weaponry, and the hardships that were such an important part of this American success story.
And now, let's head over to St. Bernard Middle School and meet its SuperNews duo.
Hi, I'm Brody.
And I'm Jordan.
And welcome to St. Bernard for our SuperNews. We'll begin our segment with our top priority here at school, literacy. We strive daily to help our students become fluent in English and math. Each day, we all take ten minutes to read and reflect on our favorite book. Students earn their way into leveled SSR clubs for special prizes like concessions, free dress days, pizza parties, free books, and a field trip. It's a great way to encourage everyone to read.
Our library club also promotes reading throughout SBM. They get to choose which books are featured in the library, and their book recommendations go a long way to get kids reading. Our book club meets every other Friday to discuss a book. The book club is open to anyone at SBM, and it is a great way to get students to reach their SSR goals.
In addition to SSR, our ELA teachers love to hook our students into reading with First Chapter Fridays. Every Friday, students get to hear the first chapter of a really great novel. Then it's a race to the library to see who will be able to check out the book first for SSR.
We also encourage math literacy, helping our students to keep their skills fresh and sharp. Math fluency is done here at SBM using iXL. Students work on their math fluency skills every week in Eagle class and can also access iXL at home to practice fluency as well.
Our goal at St. Bernard Middle is to encourage students to become confident, well-rounded students. We believe that when students get to practice reading and math fluency daily, they will become lifelong learners.
And now, back to you guys in the studio.
Nice job Eagles. And we'd like to recognize the two principals from our SuperNews sites today, Deidre Bailey and Angela Seibert.
Hi, my name is Deidre Bailey. I am excited about starting my thirty-fourth year in education, my fourteenth year here at Smith as principal.
I am the principal at St. Bernard Middle School, and I am, in fact, a product of the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools. I graduated from Shamet High School in 1995, and I have been teaching or educating here since 2000. I started at Borghardt Middle School.
I think my third year of college, I knew I wanted to be a teacher. I always did school things, reading, and wanting to pretend to be a teacher growing up.
So something that I find to be a beautiful cycle is this concept of being a public school student who has absolutely had a satisfying and fulfilling and lovely school career as a student, then to return as a teacher, to do that again for others, to provide for them, not just an in-class education, but also to be able to be their football coach or to be their soccer coach or to help them with a play or drama or lines. I think that they had that themselves, and they want to give that back, and it just continues to be this beautiful cycle for them in terms of them continuing to get fulfilled for the things that fulfilled them when they were kids as well. I was a classroom teacher for ten years. I taught English, math, and drama, and many of my former students have come back, and they work for me now and work for many of the other schools in the district, and I just feel it gives such a positive message about the public school system that we have here in St. Bernard, to see these teachers return to education to give back what it was they received, and I love that.
I think I'm really proud of the fact that I came home to make a difference in my community. Sometimes it's challenging, but I like the fact that because I'm excited about learning and education, I'm hoping to ignite that in some of the kids in our community where I was born and raised, and also to show that public education still works.
Thanks for all you do.
And before we go, we'd also like to acknowledge all of the performers, teachers, and the tech crew who brought the holidays to life again. The Cultural Arts Center truly was a hub of music and good cheer, and we're thankful to have been able to host these concerts and performances again.
And a special shout-out to a special performer, Shamet High School senior Sophia Licurdo, who was recently awarded first place in the prestigious Donald W. Wood Senior Vocal Competition. Sophia is not only a talented vocalist, but more importantly, represents all that we try to instill in our performers. She is driven and passionate, and we are incredibly proud of her.
Congratulations to her, and thanks to all of you for watching.
And we'll see you next month, where we'll meet our eleven Students of the Year. From our team here at Penn Studio, we'll see you next time on SuperNews.
Where we always let the SuperNews roll. See you next time.
Thank you, Lexi. Do you want to add anything to that? Okay, Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Lexi, you're doing a great job directing traffic to our social media and our webpages and posting important information and accentuating the positives about our school system. Page views, you're up one-hundred-and-sixty-nine percent. New page follows, up forty-eight percent. Total visits, eighteen thousand, total page views, twenty-four thousand. So I just wanted to tell you, you're doing a great job and keep up the good work.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
Well, since we're recognizing our board members, I'd like to recognize Mr. Warner for pushing hard to get a communications person on the board many, a few years back, I believe. Thank you for doing that.
I had a little help from you, Mr. Long.
But thank you for that.
Thank you.
Lexi, thank you very much for the SuperNews. It's always wonderful to see our students excel and achieve so much, and also our personnel, our teachers and principals. And the students at St. Bernard Middle did a great job, as well as Smith Elementary, they did a great job. And congratulations to all those receiving awards with the Posse Scholarships and everything, and the music performance this year, the Christmas performance. All of our students are just, there's so much opportunity here, and they definitely take advantage of it, and they really do shine and make our parish look great. So we thank you for highlighting all those positive things in our parish, and we appreciate all that you do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we go on? Okay, great job, thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda is the St. Bernard Parish Government proclaiming January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month. And with us tonight, we are honored and privileged to have our parish president, Mr. McGinnis, with us tonight. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor to be here tonight. It was a privilege and an honor at our last council meeting to recognize the month of January as, you know, School Board Member Recognition Month. And, you know, I'm just sitting here listening to just the longevity of people who have been in our system and the solid, you know, the solid framework that all of these people moving into St. Bernard Parish right now and what they have to plug into for their children. And, you know, the school board and our educational system here in St. Bernard Parish is one or one A, the reason why people are moving in. They're safe, too, and our sheriff and the sheriff deputies do a great job. And over the last six years or so, I think we put it all together with parish government. And the cooperation, you mentioned it at the council meeting, you know, the cooperation that we have in St. Bernard Parish right now is something that we need to continue. You guys are having an election, we're having an election, and people who are looking for these seats to fill in leadership is important, more so in my mind now that I've been in it for the last few years, and Ms. Votchay's been in it for fifty-two years. Is that what you just said?
Actually, it's fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
This is the fifty-first year, yeah. He hired me before that.
Right, so anyway, thank you all so much for what you all do for our community. Congratulations on being recognized, and I wish I could have ate a piece of king cake tonight. But my wife's sitting over there, and she's, "We're on a diet," so I know it doesn't look like it, but we're gonna do it. But I want to read this, "By the virtue of the authority vested in us as the governing body of the parish of St. Bernard, we do hereby proclaim parish president's office and the council January 2022 as School Board Member Recognition Month." So thank you all so much for everything you do.
And if I could, President McGinnis, I want to recognize Ms. Lori McGinnis also, who is a very integral part of our system, our head nurse, who takes care of our health needs in our parish, and along with her great nursing staff. Thank you for being here tonight, too, Lori, and thanks for all you do. But on behalf of the entire board, we just want to thank you, President McGinnis and the council, for giving this recognition. I think this is the first time that we've ever gotten School Board Recognition Month, and I've been on this board on my fortieth year, and this is the first time ever. So we appreciate the council and your office to recognize us also, and we do appreciate everything you all do in cooperation with the school board. And as you said, and I did have an opportunity to mention it at the council meeting when you presented it, you know, we're extremely grateful for the cooperation that you, the council, the sheriff's office, and all of us who were elected by the people to represent them for the betterment of St. Bernard Parish. And, you know, when we work together, good things happen, and, you know, we always need to keep in mind that we were elected for the betterment of the individuals who live here and to make St. Bernard Parish the best place, not only in the parish, I mean, not only in the state, but in the United States. And I can truly say that, and we're very blessed to have great representation, and we appreciate the cooperation with all leaders who have been elected. So we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the recognition and appreciate it and look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you very much.
We have it on a queue to make sure we do this every year now. But I do have to say, Mr. Warner told Lexi how good of a job she was doing. Well, she deserves credit for this recognition. Just to let you know, but next time, next year, it'll be all on us.
Again, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Votchay?
You know, and I just want to reiterate the point that Guy has made, you know, when he alluded to, say, my being here fifty-one years. Now, he's a grandfather, and I taught him, you know, and many of you who are sitting around this horse, you went through our school system. And as Guy said earlier on, many of our educators have been with us thirty, thirty-five years and counting, above and below, and we have a tremendous mix of bright, new, and young talent coming in, but much or many more experienced educators who have been here a long time. So people coming into the community, people who are putting, choosing our schools to come to, putting their children in our schools, have that good feeling that we've got that mix of educators and that historical perspective where we have so many of our people here so long and dedicating their lives to the education of children here in this community. So we're really, really happy with our more veteran people and super, super excited every time we welcome the new and the young, talented ones coming into our school system, many of whom who went through our schools and are coming back home to be a part of the continued growth of St. Bernard Parish. So we're very proud of our school system, we're very proud of our school board, who really work together harmoniously to make the best decisions for children in this community, and very fortunate to work with other public officials in this parish who have that same goal in mind. And every time we make a call, whether it's to the parish council or the parish president or the DA or the sheriff, whatever, every one of our judges, they respond so quickly and so positively that this is a community here in St. Bernard that works. This is a community who work together, and the leadership works together, and that's what makes good things happen for not only our children, but for all the community members here in St. Bernard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Anyone else? Okay, and before we go on, I failed to mention, and I know she's sitting in the back of the room, another person who helps make our community a great place to live is Connie from the register of voters. So thank you for being here tonight. I know she's interested in the redistricting, but thank you very much for being a wonderful...
Being recognized.
Yes.
I'm up there looking.
But thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate it. Another good working relationship. Thank you again, President McGinnis and Ms. McGinnis. All right, next item on the agenda, election of officers. And as according to our policy, every two years, we need to change our officers, or the max is two years at a time. So at this time, we will elect a president. So are there, and I guess we should have had the policy to read from it, but it's every two years. Okay, Mr. Long, would you like to open the floor to the black...
Yes, yes.
President?
Can I, should I make a nomination now?
You want to open the floor first?
Okay, I'll open the floor for nominations.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long to open the floor for nominations. Is there a second by Ms. Lemoine? Okay, all in favor of opening the floor to nominations? Signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Okay, Mr. Long, you want to make a...
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Clifford... Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Clifford England as president of the St. Bernard Parish School Board for the next term.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long, is there a second? Second by Ms. Lemoine. Okay. Is there, are there any other nominations at this time?
Move the nomination be closed.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell to close nominations, second by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? All in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Mr. England, congratulations in being elected president.
I'd just like to thank my fellow board members for giving this opportunity to serve you as your president. But what I really need, I need your help for this upcoming year because it's going to be some difficult decisions coming up with our school district. Because there's always problems coming up. But I really want to thank the board and I'd also like to thank Ms. Dysart, you know, for her serving of the past two years as president. Thank you, Ms. Dysart.
Thank you, Mr. England, and I will pass the gavel to you.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations to Mr. England.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay. We move to election of a vice president. Do we have a motion to open the floor for that?
I'll make a...
Mr. Warner?
Make a motion that we open the floor for nominations for vice president.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Kelly, okay. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'd like to make a nomination of Ms. Diana Dysart for vice president.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Diana Dysart?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long? Okay. You have something, Mr. Campbell?
I haven't said anything.
Okay, all right. Any other nominations?
Move the nomination be closed.
Okay, a motion to nomination be closed, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Dysart. I'm looking forward to working with you again.
Thank you, Mr. England, and thank you, fellow board members. And I appreciate the honor and the privilege of being elected as the vice president now and also of serving in the past as your president. We are blessed because I think we have a great working relationship around this horseshoe. And, you know, I look forward to working with each and every one of you, along with Mr. England, and we always work so cooperatively together. And sometimes we might disagree on some issues, but we always respect one another's opinions and still move on again for the betterment of the students that we serve and the people that we represent. So I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dysart.
Thank you.
It is true, Ms. Dysart, that if you think of the children first, we'll go a long way.
That's right.
And that's the main purpose of this board, the purpose of this board is to give this Voce and the administration the tools to work with, you know? If we give them the tools to work with, and it's been proven, you know, for the last eight years, you've been having Posse people, you know? I mean, this is amazing, you know? Just think about that. And then there's scholarships, every year we go to our graduations, and how much money that we're collecting for scholarships? It's phenomenal. So the administration's doing a great job, but it's because of this board right here that gives the opportunity to, Ms. Voce, to handle this. And it's not too much dissension here. Years ago, they used to have dissension. Ms. Dysart can probably tell, Mr. Long can probably tell you that, where they, they had the three o'clock in the morning, all right? We don't need that, okay? But this is a good working board and what we really, I really appreciate it, and I know Ms. Dysart does, and almost every one sitting here appreciate that. But the main thing is to keep the children first and we can go a long way. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? The floor's open. Okay. We're going to number four, approval to incorporate the reported general committee meetings minutes of January 11th, 2022, into the minutes of the January 25th, 2022, regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Ms. White. Any questions? Being none? Approved? Okay, move on to 4.2, approval of special meeting superintendent's evaluation minutes of December 7th, 2021, as published on December 17th, 2021. Motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Lemoine. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4.3, approval of regular monthly meeting minutes of December 14th, 2021, as published on January 21st, 2022.
So moved.
Second by Ms. White, second, okay, Ms. Lemoine. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Item number five, let me see what we've got here. Okay, this is the review of personnel changes for January 2022. Ms. Voce?
You just see those marked in yellow are changes since the committee meeting, and these are for your information only, does not require any board action.
Thank you. Any questions for board members? Mr. Long?
I didn't realize that Mrs. Voce has a son.
No. This is another retirement.
Just joking.
Ms. Dysart, you want to handle the retirements?
Yes.
Okay, I know you like that.
Thank you, Mr. England. We want to recognize Monica Manali on her retirement and also on retirements, Joanne Corgo and Deborah Merritt. We want to thank all three of them, Ms. Manali, Ms. Corgo and Ms. Merritt, for all their years of service to St. Bernard Parish school system, and we want to wish you well and a very happy retirement. It's always sad to see our retirees retire, but they deserve it after so many years of being with us. And we want to say happy retirement and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dysart. Okay, going to item number six, 6.1, approval to authorize a new elected board president to sign the board, school board checking account on behalf of the board. There's a motion by Ms. Dysart, second by Mr. Long. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. 6.2, adoption of a resolution code of contact from Louisiana school board members was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner.
One second.
Second by Ms. Lemoine. And let me see. Let me go ahead and read this into the minutes because I don't think it was, it wasn't ready to kind of benefit the last meeting, no, okay. Okay, code of contact for Louisiana school board members, whereas members of the school board who endeavor to meet and adhere to the following LSBA code of contact, respecting and uphold the laws and constitution of the United States, the state of Louisiana, and the policies adopted by the school board. Respect and treat with professionalism and courtesy with my fellow board members, the superintendent, staff, educators, parents and students of the district. Maintain decorum and professionalism in my communication with and about my fellow school board members, the superintendent, staff, educators, parents and students of the district, no matter the form. Recognize that my authority is that of member of the school board acting through the process of the school board and that I do not have or know I will attempt to exert any authority as an individual over the superintendent, staff, educators, parents or students of the district. Respect and adhere to the decision of the school board while retaining the right to respectfully seek reconsideration of decisions which are individually disagreeing. Guard and direct the concerns, complaints and questions of the students, parents and students of the superintendent for consideration in action in accordance with the school board policy. Conduct my personal professional life in a manner fulfilling of the representative of people in accordance with the laws of the United States and the state of Louisiana. Refrain from using your position as elected school board member to ensure personal gains as a grant des debent. Okay, that was a right one. Make a concerted effort to attend the meetings of the school board on to which I have called to and prepared to discuss and deliver on the matters that are scheduled just before me. Respect and maintain the confidentiality of all information that I might be divvying in accordance with the state and federal laws and obligatory obligation that I owe to the district. Affiliate with the school board association and I have myself to continue education opportunities offered hereby toward meeting my obligations and any continued education as proven by law. Resolve that the St. Bernard School Board adopt the Louisiana School Board Association Code of Contact for Louisiana school board members. Do we have a joint affirmation on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. On 6.3, adoption of resolution, date, time and place of general committee meeting, regular monthly meeting for the year 2022, this was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Ms. Dysart. Okay, I'll read this into the minutes. Whereas Title 17 requires local school board to hold at least one regular monthly meeting at the public written notice of meeting be given. Whereas Act 707 of the 1977 Louisiana legislative sense, local school boards from having to give written notice of each regular meeting by adopting their resolution, establish the date, time and place of regular meetings. And whereas the Louisiana School Board Association has recommended our school boards in the state of Louisiana adopt their resolution to this effecting that the resolution be given appropriate written notice, therefore be it resolved that the St. Bernard School Board hereby establish 6:00 PM on the second Tuesday of each month of the calendar year 2022 to meet as a committee of the whole for a general committee meeting. And at 6:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month for the calendar year 2022 to meet as regular monthly board meeting with the following exceptions, March 15th, 2022 for the general committee meeting, November 15th, 2022 for its regular monthly meeting, December 6th, 2022 for its general committee meeting, December 13th, 2022 for the regular monthly meeting. And be resolved that said meeting will be conducted at St. Bernard School Board Office, 200 East St. Bernard Highway, Chautauqua, Louisiana, and an agenda will be posted 24 hours prior to a meeting at the St. Bernard Parish School Board Office and on the St. Bernard School Board website. And be further resolved that the written public notice be given at least 24 hours in advance of any change in date, time and place for regular meeting. And be it resolved further that this resolution should be posted in the St. Bernard Parish School Board Office and that copy will be forwarded to the local newspapers. Do we have a joint affirmation on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, now, item 6.4, update on redistricting plan for the St. Bernard Parish School Board public hearing to accept public comments. Ms. Voce?
Okay. Just as a reminder, at our last meeting, we had the company come in strategic group who, the demographers who are working with us on our redistricting plan and has the first, had the first proposal presented to the board. And we again have that here for your inspection. At that time, we said to the public that the plan or the first draft, the proposed plan, is available here at the school board office for public inspection. We also have put the map that you have with you with the proposed new lines on our website so that anybody can view it on the St. Bernard Parish School Board website. So we had public comment at our last meeting. We had one person suggest a change and we've noted part of that. Tonight, it's available for public comment if anyone wanted to come and talk with us about the boundaries. We know that at the February committee meeting, which will be held the second Tuesday in February, which is February 8th, that it again will be available for public inspection and any public comment. And hopefully, since we've made then those three meetings available for public comment, we are hoping that once we get all of the comments from the public, that at the February 22nd school board meeting, we will put all those together and adopt the plan with the new, the new districts. As you know, we had to move more quickly than some of the other governmental bodies because the school board elections are this fall. So we have to complete the process in the spring and send that in to make sure that the plan is set by qualifying time and for the fall elections. So we're just here tonight that if anyone has any public comment they wish, wish to give us concerning the proposed plan, we're here to hear that. And again, if you're sitting at home and you're looking at the website, if you want to email in any comments or if you want to appear at our meeting on February 8th, we'll be happy to accept comment from any citizen of St. Bernard.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? Ms. Dysart?
Ms. Voce, yes, just, and I thought we had discussed this previously, that in the resolution, just for clarity to the public, because some of the, some of them are listed as being precincts, you know, 10, 11, 12, and then a portion of precinct 13. Can we add to it, because I think in the past, it would include the streets that, besides saying, you know, the part of the precincts, can we just be more clear for the public's knowledge of the streets, like, you know, starting on, you know, Angella, moving down or whatever district it may be, you know, to include that?
In, in your packet, as a companion to the resolution, there is a street-by-street description.
Okay.
So you can see where it says, "Go from this street, go north, and then go west from here," whatever. But according to our advisors who are putting the resolution together, this is what is required of us to send the plan in because they talk at the state level when they're looking at this in terms of the precincts themselves. So the resolution itself deals with the actual precincts, that's the language they wishes to use, but we will also include for the public the actual description of what each one of those districts means. So it will be together.
Okay, that was my next, so we're gonna put that description along with the resolution in its entirety?
Absolutely, yes, yes. So the resolution is for us to send in to the, to the state and such, and the description is really more for us and the general public that might make it a little bit clearer, street by street.
Good.
Some people, though, prefer it because they know what the precincts are.
Yeah.
At this point, okay. But we will have both so that it'll be clear to the public. And again, if they wish to make any comment on it, to look at a proposed change, we're here and will consider it, or you will consider it as a board when you look at it again in February 8th. And then hopefully by that time on the 22nd, we will have the actual vote to approve the districts.
Thank you, Ms. Voce. And of course, this was in regard to the, the new census that came out and we had to redistrict because of those numbers.
Right, we were malapportioned. We had too many in one, not enough population in the other. And we have to take all of the population of St. Bernard Parish as counted in the last census, since we have 11 districts divided by 11, that's the target number, and no district can be more than plus or minus 5%. no district can be more than plus or minus five percent from that targeted number.
Correct.
And looking at the current ones we had, we have some out of proportion because they were based on ten years ago, the census. So we have to go ahead and make changes to make sure that we are within the limits of the law and not more than plus or minus five percent above or below the targeted number for each district.
Thank you.
That's it, Ms. Dyssour?
Yes.
Mr. Long.
So, Ms. Fochey, based on what you said, uh, changes can still be made up until in February, correct?
Correct. February twenty-second.
So we, we shouldn't pass a resolution tonight to adopt?
No.
So this, this resolution will be put on hold until?
This, right.
February.
It's just our plan to keep bringing it before the public at each meeting for input, and no vote will be taken until the February twenty-second after we have all the input and we've considered the changes suggested by different members of the public and then incorporated into the final resolution.
That sounds like a good plan.
That's it, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Warren.
So Ms. Fochey, the district descriptions are also posted on our website?
Um, if they aren't, they will be in the morning.
Okay.
Okay? I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're on the website. I know the map is, I'm not sure about the actual description, street by street, but if not, we will make sure it's on there.
Thank you.
Ms. Egan.
I'm having little problems here, and I'm not colorblind because I was blue before. And I understand that my area was too large and has to be changed. So, I mean, I have no problems with that, but I think I remember the gentleman saying that they would not have a portion of any other district, okay, that would, would be taken in changing my section. And in what I'm looking at, and unfortunately, I do have my glasses on, but the printing, I'm having problems with the pink area, I have the green, okay? The right, on the left side, excuse me, on, on the right side, where there's a portion of the pink. It appears that the line goes through the middle of pink, okay? And then moves toward the district, I mean, precinct thirteen and then?
Where the district was. And the color is where it is.
Where it was and where it was. Well, since it's, they're gonna, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I can't read these names, and we're gonna, that's gonna be corrected. So with, it's my understanding that we're gonna get a better picture of what, what district we have. Is that correct with the streets, though I know we have it?
We can blow each district up larger so that you can see it on the map.
Yeah, that's it.
Yes, we will do that.
Well, when we get that, I think I can see better. I'm sure I'll be able to see better.
Okay.
And then we'll, we will see if, if that is corrected.
Okay.
And when I say corrected, I'm not saying it's wrong now. I'm just saying that with the street names, like we all have a problem with, it's so small. And as I said, I have my glasses on. Of course, there were only those ones for a dollar and a half, so maybe that could be the problem.
You get what you pay for.
I got, I got another one home that's a little strong I should have brought out. But, okay, so, so if that's gonna be, as my understanding, that we're going to get something larger, so we will be able to identify the streets that is encompassed by my.
We, we have them blown up, and I thought we had sent, but we will make sure you get a copy of, you know, Ms. Berthold has them blown up, so we'll make sure you get yours.
Okay. Now, I, I, obviously, I don't need this whole thing. I just need my section, which is green now. I just need that section and that portion of pink, okay, which is above, adjacent to my, you know, my district, that's all. And when I get that, I'm sure I'll be, it'll be clear to me, and I'll be able to make my decision as far as that.
Yeah, I think where Mr. Higgins coming from, like, ten years ago when we had this previously, you know, we had each board member had a large map, and you had your district with all the streets on it, where if you had part of, half of the street, it showed that. And so that's what we're getting at, instead of just having this little bit of form like this, where we're gonna need a blown up.
Okay. Well, we had each section enlarged and we, we sent it to y'all, we just didn't print them all out tonight.
Right.
But you should have them, and if you don't, we will make sure you get them.
Right, okay.
Okay?
Thank you. That's, that's good. Ms. Dyssour.
Thank you. In addition, you know, looking at this map also, there's no need for us to see, no offense, but the West Bank. So if, if just the, the portion of St. Bernard Parish would be on it, it would be in a bigger version.
Right. Well, we have them all blown up.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's just.
But on a bigger map even, you know, there's no need to have a different parish when our focus is St. Bernard Parish. So maybe that could be eliminated so that the rest of it would be larger too, on the, the entire parish map.
No, no, I read that.
Okay? Thank you.
Any other board member?
Well, no, because it doesn't. You know, that's why I wanna get the things here.
Mr. Campbell, any, any questions?
Fourteen and thirteen. There's something here that says. Oh, excuse me. My, my colleague here was correcting me.
Okay.
He thinks. No problem, that's it.
Yeah, Mr. Campbell.
Move, we adjourn.
No, no, we're not ready yet, no. We're not ready yet, Mr. Campbell. It's coming.
So let thought.
I listen to you and you put me in trouble.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Fochey about the redistricting? Thank you, Ms. Fochey, for giving that understanding. Okay, item number seven to items to be placed on a committee meeting. I'm sorry, Ms. Lamoin, I'm sorry.
No, sorry at all. I just, we saw a little snippet tonight of the MoMA Center in the super news. I just wanted to place that on the agenda for next month for an update on programs at the MoMA Center.
Okay, fine.
What are you gonna place on it? Say that again?
An update on programs and activities at the MoMA Center.
Anyone else? That's how you thank you. Okay, move on to item number eight, superintendent's notes. Ms. Fochey.
Okay. Uh, just to mention, today, in Baton Rouge, and I wasn't, you know, able to go up there, there was a jumpstart conference statewide, and Ms. LaBeauf, Aileen LaBeauf, was representing us at the conference. She's the CTE coordinator at Chalmitt High School and made the presentation to us at the last board meeting concerning all of the programs that are available for our students in dual enrollment and beyond with associate degrees and such. And not only were we actually moderating and doing some of the sessions for the other people within the, within the state, but the project that we partnered with, with the Merrill Foundation and Nunez concerning the coastal restoration, those oyster, in putting the, 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 what do you call those?
Mangroves?
No, the cages.
The oyster reef.
Yeah, on the oyster reef, you know, where they, our kids who are taking welding, then weld the cages and such that put on, into the oyster beds to help with the erosion. I can't even get the words out at this point. So they made a presentation today at the statewide conference, and I had people texting me with some really positive reactions to that with the project that we have entered into, as I said, with the Merrill Foundation and Nunez Community College and our students. So I just wanted people to know that. And we are, the additional programs that we're gonna be offering kids, that we're gonna take to the Bessie Board in June for approval, those meetings are taking place right now, technical assistance meetings that we're setting up to make sure that we have the programming in sequence so that we can begin them this coming August. So that's moving along very, very rapidly at this point. We also, in the month of February, the beta conventions are occurring statewide, and we have kids who are going to the elementary convention, which are fourth and fifth graders, and to the middle school, and then to the high school. So the whole month of February, we've got different groups of kids going to these particular conferences. But internally, our cycle, believe it or not, we're preparing for staffing for next school year. So I'm gonna be meeting with all of our principals with projected numbers and such, and looking at numbers of teachers we would hire, para professionals, what our staffing needs are, and we will then, after we determine from our current employees who's planning on returning, who will, who will not be returning and such, we'll have a transfer day in April, and then we'll have our job fair on that Saturday, May seventh, for external people to come to apply for jobs next year. But to let everybody know, our staffing process starts now in preparation for this coming August. So we're assessing our needs right now, looking at projected numbers and such, determining slots, sitting there and seeing what certifications we need, what types of teachers and employees, and going through our internal transfer process for next year, and then to the outside for all positions that we need to fill. So anyone out there who is looking to be employed by the St. Bernard Parish school system, make sure that you contact our personnel department, make sure that you're filling out applications. If you have a CDL and you're a bus driver, hey, we're, we're ready. We don't have to wait till August. We are, we can use a few more right now. And all different types of employees in our operation, whether they be our cafeteria technicians, our bus drivers, our para educators, our teachers, we are looking for all good people to come into our school system. So if you wanna be a part of us, just give us a call and we will guide you down that pathway.
And Ms. Fochey, I know in administration, we're gonna be losing a couple of people over the next year. We are including this in the search also.
Absolutely. That's why we are beginning the staffing process now so that we, there'll be a trickle effect with people leaving and coming in.
I have a question from Ms. Fochey. Our school calendar, so we're back on track now, we've, we've made up all of our minutes and all of our time. So the remainder of the year, the days off, what is it, a week off, Mardi Gras?
Yeah, a week off of Mardi Gras.
Week off of Easter?
Not a week. For Easter, the student holiday is Thursday and Friday before Easter and Monday and Tuesday after Easter.
Whatever our regular?
So we're back on track, we're back to the regular calendar that we adopted last year for this year. We have made up the instructional minutes and days that we lost due to Hurricane Ida and, um...
Fingers crossed.
As of right now, fingers crossed.
We don't get a snow day?
If we don't get some other event that potentially closes us, the holidays that are built into the calendar for Mardi Gras and Easter remain as they were when we adopted the original calendar.
Well, my, my godchild, Bren, will be very happy to hear that.
I'm so glad.
Also, board, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Dyssour.
I just wanted to mention, Ms. Fochey, you mentioned about the jumpstart meeting. In, in reading the, the Advocate, there was a big article about, you know, the state trying to get into the jumpstart program more and more, but St. Bernard Parish was actually a pioneer in this whole program. And I think it started back in like two thousand when we had dual enrollment of our high school students and cooperation with Nunez Community College. So our students in high school started earning college credits even back then. So we talking twenty-two years ago, and it's benefited so many of our students who went into their first semester of college, not only testing out, but also taking courses and earning many hours of, of college credits. And some were able to, some of our students were even able to finish college in, you know, less than four years, some of them three years because they earned all this college credit prior to entering a four-year university. So I just wanna say that we've had cooperation with our administration and our teachers and our students, and, you know, it's been a benefit to our, to our students particularly, and to the parents who didn't have to fork out more money for, for college when our students were able to earn so many college credits prior to entering actually a four-year university. So it was great reading that article. It's like, okay, the state's catching up with us because we've been doing it since two thousand. And I'm glad that they, they see that it is definitely a beneficial program for students. Thank you for mentioning that, Ms. Fochey.
And just piggyback, just piggybacking on that, and I know we keep saying it, but, you know, I want our parents to understand along with our students, because we, you know, when you're fifteen, a sixteen, a seventeen-year-old, sometimes you don't quite get it, you don't understand the whole picture. But if you are a more academic student, because we've been doing a lot in the CTE area with, in conjunction with Nunez, and Electoral, and HVAC, and EMTs, and CNAs, and all of these different certifications and industry-based credentials, from the academic side, if you think, well, my child is gonna go to a four-year institution, these dual enrollment credits, not only can they earn thirty hours, a whole year off, sometimes even more than that, into their four-year program. If your child then qualifies for TOPS, TOPS is a four-year award. So if your child can get at least the first year of college credit while he's still in high school, that four-year award still waits for them. If they can then complete college with an additional three years, and maybe they wanna go to law school or graduate school in some way, that TOPS will help them in that fourth year to begin a graduate program. So it is beneficial not only when you think of a four-year degree for your child, if he's on that route, you know, that academic route eligible for TOPS, but even beyond that, if he wants to study, it can help put a dent in what a graduate school will cost. So I know that's a long way down the road, and when you talk to a sixteen-year-old about that, sometimes it's like, what? You know, what? But it then begins to make sense as he gets a little bit older and a little bit older. But from the parental point of view, if you've had experience with that whatsoever, it really is a tremendous benefit to your family or to the student himself not to come out with so much debt once they come out of college through a loan program and such. So we're doing everything we can to educate our students and hopefully our parents that these are good pathways for our kids to take. And now that the state is recognizing that more and working to push it, because sometimes, even though we were trying to push some of that, we'd hit these roadblocks because the state wouldn't recognize that, you know, for our students. But now it's opening up and opening up more and more, and we're encouraging our kids to look toward either that more academic pathway or that career and technical ed pathway, realizing there are opportunities for them no matter which path they take. Because no matter which path they take, it's gonna require training after high school. You know, high school diploma these days is not really the optimal level. So whether you're going to a more academic institution afterward or looking to more of a career and technical area, you're still gonna need that additional training, and we can start that while they're still in high school.
So it just brings to light, you know, how important our little community college is to have. have down here, and, you know, Catherine Lamoin does a great job with that, Dr. Tina Tenny, Cliff England serves as the chairman of the foundation forum, so we're very fortunate, we're very involved in that, in the, in the community college, and y'all are doing a great job.
Anyone else? I'd just like to bring up, everybody serves on a different committee. So Angie, if you can email to each board member a list of the committee assignments, if you wanna change, or if you wanna serve on another committee, please let Angie know, and we'll address that at the next meeting. Okay? Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Campbell? Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
This means a joint. Thank you and good night.
Those maps and such.